Good evening, welcome to the Town of Cisro Planning Board Meeting. Would you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Mike, could you lead us off, please?
Pledge of Allegiance, we do the flag, United States of America, the interior public, for which this is one nation, under God, indivisible, and ever to be.
Thank you. First order of business is the approval of the minutes from our November 5th meeting. Any questions or comments? Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Mike?
I'm good.
Chuck?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Minutes are approved. Now we will open the meeting to public comment. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to address the board on any act of application, you can do so now. Given nobody's approach, we'll close the public input. Stop laughing. Again. Move on to the first agenda item. This is a for two lot subdivision, property's at eight zero six three Burton Road. Yep, can hear? Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Dave Sluski. I'm a project surveyor with CT Mail Associates and I'm representing Cisro Associates with the two lot subdivision of the property at eighty sixty-three Burton Road. Since the last meeting, we received the comments from the town engineer and we revised the map to incorporate the items that he requested. The main one would be an easement, utility easement between the two properties to encompass both utility services for both lots. Generally, we tried to keep it a twenty-foot width with some flares on either end to encompass the service pole and the transformer that's existing on site.
Okay. We'll open it to comments from the board, questions, and then we'll go to the public hearing. Mike, any questions?
No, I'm all set.
Chuck?
All set also. Mary?
I just had one question. Mark, I think. Does the owner name need to be on both the two way and two V lot? On here?
It's the, I'm sorry.
The owner's name.
I mean, it's, it's all the same.
Okay. For now, it is.
Yeah, I understand this is really going to be spout, but it's part of the subdivision or something as well, they sell their lot.
Okay. So both lots will remain?
Their intent is to keep ownership of the parcel, but both parcels will be leased to their tenants.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I had.
Zach?
I'm all set.
As am I. Steve, any comments?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Yolanda, anything?
I haven't seen the easement, so they're gonna have to present it at some point. Okay, so what you, what you have is, is a map, which is a picture. When you file a picture, it doesn't file the underlying easement. You're gonna have to present an easement for review and approval. The underlying easement actually conveys the easement rights. So I haven't seen that.
Is a separate map?
It's not a map. It's, it's in green.
Okay.
And in this case, since it own, all of, it's one owner, right?
Yes.
It has to be a declaration which specifically says that it will not merge into the ownership of the property. So attorney or somebody will have to draft that for you. You know, you, you can use that as an attachment to define the easement area, but those rights have to be defined, put into an agreement, a written agreement, and filed with the county, for example.
I believe the intent is that when this is approved, that that's what they would do.
Sure, but what happens, I mean, often is we have some, we're, we're showing easement, they think that's a grant of an easement and it's not. You need the underlying documentation, needs in this case to make sure. I'd be happy to talk to, you know, if they, when somebody they're talking about, be happy to take the time to make sure we get that.
Yeah, so if we move forward, we can just do a condition on that? Mark?
No, no comments. I, easement's gonna be a condition, so wouldn't sign that plan until Neil gives you the call, isn't it?
Right, so open the public input. I guess we're gonna have none. Is there anybody who will open the public hearing at this point? Is there anybody here that would like to speak for or against this project? Given nobody's approach, we'll close the public hearing. And I will make a motion for our standard seeker. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mike?
Yes.
Chuck?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
And I vote yes for the seeker. Yeah, would you prepare a motion for approval, please?
Yes, you're gonna move the adoption resolution approval application on my subdivision, former and final plan, Myron and Hong LLC, eighty sixty-three Burton Road, two lot. This approval strictly conditioned on the following. One, we have been given by the object of the terms itself from one eighty-five, six subdivision. Of the fourth, we have been asked ninety days for approval of the, for approval to file the map. That's, this is the ninety day filing deadline, the approval will have expired. Two. The underlying easement as shown on our plan was presented to the planning board attorney for review prior to recording. Recording of the underlying easement is a decision of this subdivision's approval. Finally, the EFC has notified that the chairman of the planning board made delay signing up the final plan until the chairman verifies that all that, that the EFC has executed any and all necessary agreements for the town.
Thank you. And would somebody like to make that a motion?
I'll make it a motion.
And do we have a second?
I'll say it.
Mike?
Yes.
Chuck?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
And I vote yes to the motion. All right, you're all set. We'll move on to the second agenda item. And this is for the proposed sign at Wilkins and RV signs at eight zero one zero Burton Road. The EFC's not here.
No, we told them they didn't have to come. We just wanted to go over the color.
So we had requested a description of the color painted out on a piece of the product. Nobody's seen it. And so, question of whether or not we think this is okay. I, it's kind of why, I think, from my perspective, I think that's why we asked for it, because I think that's too much for the area of the sign that it's gonna be. Just other thoughts?
Bright.
It's bright.
Is that perchance the same color they use at other locations still?
I don't know that answer.
I thought you said yes.
Let's see if we try to look at some other sites. And the one that just had whole, did you view that color? I, I don't recall being able to find something that represented.
If you look at the screen that's up here, you'll see the sign and the area that's involved. I just think this is too bright. We talked about something maybe a little more rustic, orange, dollar. Just brown.
This, yeah, this obviously is affected to something important.
Anybody in favor of that? So, now what? Unfortunately, we're gonna have to hold them up again, right? We're gonna need another sample.
One color sample presented was not acceptable. And to, and again, present another, you know, know the color or, you know, however they, however they want to approach that decision. But, but the last meeting, we need to clear that they had to present the color for approval.
Yep.
Color presented doesn't get approval. They have to come back. I mean, I, I couldn't do a condition and, and, and describe colors just to
I understand. I, I agree with that. Steve, your office will notify them?
Yeah, we can, I, we can convey that information. And just to be clear, we're not concerned about the, the copy of the text in the Wilkins, but it's, it's the color just on those panels of the site.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's all that's left.
And we're gonna look for something that would be more muted or more toward a burgundy color if they want to keep that same tone red, not, not, it's too bright.
Yes, we threw something like a little more brownish or rust, rust color. Not so bright.
Okay.
Burn red.
That to me
Will do.
That to me is rather
Thank you. So then we'll move on to the last item on the agenda. This is sketch plan review for Fulton Savings Bank for the property at five four eight zero and five five zero zero Bartel Road.
Good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
Good, very happy to meet you. Good to be those. Uh. England, something like that. Hudson. Uh. We're, Fulton Bank is looking to build a new branch, Asian. They currently have a branch across the street, but their lease is up soon and it's not big enough and has access issues. And they currently have, you look at this picture, up in the upward right-hand corner. Right about here, they have an ATM that's on site now, standalone ATM.
What, what bank is that?
Fulton Savings.
That's, that's, you're, oh, that's your bank already? You're just, okay. I'm sorry, I thought it was a different bank.
So the ATM has been a very successful location. So what they chose to do is lease a portion of the property from the owner and build in a new branch here. Unfortunately, it looks like a big piece of property, but it's not. When you look at the fact that a plaza, which is a building on the right, has dedicated parking. And as you can see there, the rows of parking, let's say the benchmark number two, that road, the next well, are dedicated to the plaza. Then the building on the left, which originally burgundy, now is in the new name of the restaurant, but it is a restaurant. And the parking to the right of it is designated with that particular structure. So what's left is what's left in the middle. And so, so this particular parcel ends up being about a hundred and sixty-five, a hundred and forty-five feet wide at the street. And then it comes in a little bit. Do you know the point here? It comes in a little bit, um, because they have a sign, what, what, down the corner, a large sign that indicates who's in the plaza. And it comes in a little bit, then it goes back. This length is about a hundred and eighty-five feet deep, so that's kind of what we have. This road here is, is in access to Route eleven. You see it there. So it's the piece that's left between the plaza, the restaurant, and access to Route eleven.
It's highlighted in green, right?
Yes, correct. Highlighted in green, right?
It lasts a fifty-foot segment?
And the fifty-foot setback is, is right there. Yes, you just hit it right here. The fifty-foot setback. And that currently is paved and the bank chose to paint that as part of the lease and we're gonna take the paving away. So that could be green space. The idea to be green space with the front of the bank when you were on Bartel Road. That's the concept there. Small branch, two thousand square feet. Basically, at maximum, see five freeways, four fully loaded, or, or universal bankers, or, you know, at my bank name. We have five, that's the ease blocks, the degrees, and the, the leagues, I don't know where, we're not even banking anymore. Everybody's lying back today, so using their phones and all the other electronics, you know. So we only, we, we show parking for fifteen people. And, and then we, the, the big part of it is really the drive-through. So now the, the bank will have a full drive-through where I think that's where all the traffic will be. Where we have the driver teller, you have the, the DM, the, the So I think that's where the traffic will be.
Okay.
So when we did the quick design of the building, uh, the, the location of the building was such, we wanted to make sure that the drive-through was in the rear. So when you were driving down Bartel Road, you'd see the building and then the driving portion was, was in the back. So in order to maintain that access, you have to drive across the front of the building and turn left between the restaurant and the building and turn into the drive-through and then exit the opposite way. When we, when we originally looked at it, uh, there are no islands in the entire plaza miles when you make a parking lot with, I think there are six, maybe ten, uh, light poles. So that provides light, all the table. We're learning when the winter would move four of them. That's where the bank will be. And then we'll relocate them to fit the parking layout that, that we chose. The, the issue gets to be that right now, when they plow the place where the winter snow is all wide open, so we just plow everywhere. When, when we build the building, we have to have minimum curves at least around the building proper, otherwise we're gonna have issues in the traffic and problems and everything else. So that, that becomes one test in terms of making sure that, uh, the, the wintertime conditions can at least stay away from the building itself. So when we did the drawing originally, we talked about, um, just providing open parking so that the plowing would still continue. But your rules and regulations, we want, um, us to provide some sort of islands and separation. When I read you, the original law, it's, it basically said that you needed three cars, you were one, you know, the, the small parking compound. We only had fifteen cars, so in my mind, that's, that probably doesn't apply us. Scriptly told that, that's not true, that's upon us. So this particular drawing just shows wide open, everything being, being paved and, uh, any indication of separation being done with painted lines now on the ground. And then you, you guys reviewed it and we've received your comments. And I, I can go, I'd like to go over them individually with you so we can talk about them, because that became an issue. How do we handle the lightings? And then I don't feel that, that the parking is an issue, but the landscape comes to major issue, doesn't really matter. So, so that's kind of the site plan in, in short form. The building itself. The current bank building in Fulton is all brick. The other banks that they own are brick. So we wanted to carry that through and use the same thing. And this is kind of the contemporary version of, of the brick building. And we used, um, uh, a, a brick similar in color to what made that would be. We, we, we did a lot of gingerbread up at the top at the eaves. Hard to see if it was in the shadow. There's a lot of gingerbread up there. And then the eaves and the, uh, cornice will be pretty ornate up at the top. And then we separated the body from the base with a limestone, uh, water table. And then contemporary windows and a, a, a canopy over the entry, over the side windows. Then we have a employee canopy at that. So the canopy would be part of the contemporary style, very, uh, bold. Again, simple plan, nothing, nothing major with it. So that's kind of it in a nutshell. But then we received the board's review and, um, that's where all the meat, the favorites was to review. But if, if we can't get through that, I don't like, I didn't engage. Steve copied for everybody to
Please, please.
Okay, item one was, the building comments came to signage, um, and the total signage, but in name lot, divided seat, one square foot, each room, or the building, located in such way. In the letter that was sent to us, they said we could basically have no more than fifty, we have fifty linear feet of street frontage, so we can't have within fifty square feet signage. Well, I, I guess I questioned the fifty square feet, because the building is fifty square feet here, but it has an extension for the employee entrance, which is another seven linear feet. It's got the canopy that comes out the front, which is another seven feet. To me, all of that faces the street. So I guess my question is, maybe we can jump this to sixty-four square feet?
Well, we have, have discretion on, on that ruling.
We, we do have discretion. I'm, I'm fine with the signage on the building.
That's fine.
Everybody else?
And then this is, quickly, this is a picture of one of their other buildings where you're changing out all the signage. We showed it up here now. These signs are sixty-two inches by seventy-three inches, but because of their shape, they're just under twenty-five square feet.
You got creative. Yeah.
But I didn't want that to be restrictive, because I know we're gonna need signage, get us through the ATM and, and signage happy and, and clothes and all that. I wasn't sure whether all of that came part of the signage for it. You know, if that had them all up, I know, well, you are, you make the fifty or sixty-four square feet of look from the hand.
Yeah, it sounds like we're, we're fine with the signage.
Oh, good. Then the second question was regarding public-facing bathrooms. We only have, as with notes.
We're fine with that one as well.
Yeah, I know, David, that's
Yeah.
And Steve and I went through that. So one, there's one bathroom. Public can use it if they want to, but
We did that to his good discretion.
The other one was all buildings show exhibit a clearly defined base. And I guess so. My question is, we separated the base, just like we did in the original building, with a limestone, uh, water table? The question is, do we need to change the material or make it something different?
My opinion, yes. It's gotta be more defined than, from my perspective. Thoughts on it?
Say that again, though.
What's that?
More defined.
More defined, yeah. The, the new, uh, code calls for clearly defined base.
Different material.
Yes, I have a question. How do you, how do you find that?
Different material and/or color.
So could you?
Absolutely.
But just, I'm not saying it'd be that, but gonna make sure we go or
Yeah, so the new, new, the new design standards call for that.
To distinguish between the two, that's
Okay. Uh, they, they asked about, uh, I don't, what was
Can we stay on that? Just one more second. So the crown molding, that's really hard to see on there. I like what's on the other location.
Yeah, here.
Yeah.
This is kind of, this piece right here, it's kind of replicated, except it's
Is it?
You see, we'll see, if you can see through the shadow, see all the, all the corners and, you know, all the brackets and everything.
Yeah, but it's hard to see.
Yeah, it's hard to see. When we do the next set of drawings, we'll define all that.
Okay.
This is very preliminary.
I understand, yep.
Make sure we have the opportunity to, and we go ahead here, or, or we need a position where we, we can't use on site. So, okay. They asked about the signage and those signs up there are LED backlit, with, backlit, pushed through the toilet face. I think that's pretty common today, from my understanding, so. But somebody will know a little bit.
Mark, you'll review the, the lighting once we get the complete package.
Typically, the light for the signs is not necessarily included in the photo metrics, but you have to live in term of the external, or, but so it, it needs to be better, uh, specified in the plan.
Better description of what they are on the plans.
Or additional details provided.
Yep.
At a very early stage. Yeah, I, I imply when it's, uh, well, if the building mounted or site directional signage for the drive-through, uh, our thought was that the signage would be building mounted. And it's kind of pretty typical, same types of sign. But what we're thinking is that, see where the sconces are there? Right about where your cursor is? Your cursor now. See the sconce next to the window? Oh, there it is. On that corner right there to the right would be a building mounted sign that come out from the building that would say drive-through straight ahead. And on the other corner there, same signs as I said to the left. So you eventually get yourself all the way around to the back. Once the customers realize where it is, signage won't really matter, but I think initially we need to have, well, my thought was that being building mounted. And the question is, does that count into the square footage that we need to have, or do we have to actually put, you know, sign the post instead of
That's more typical, right? A sign and a post?
It, it is, but I mean, uh, they can present whatever they want to do, if you can see if that works for you, right? But again, we're, at the early stage. So, um, they just need to come forward with a plan as to what they'd like to do to, you know, shows that, but, right?
Well, we're gonna proceed in that direction. I just wanted to know, does that count for our square footage?
Don't worry about it.
Uh, we, we, the next time we'll show all four elevation, so we'll do it. Uh, there was a question about the pipe clearance for the drive-through canopies. Well, our projection is that drive-through shown in the picture, there was ten-foot board clearance. I don't know if the board, they said, was that a loci, is it that? No, loci bombed in nineteen, so. So do we have to, we, we'll put pipe on the side where the car enter, and that'll be another piece of signage, but question my own, pipe was a little clear. I don't know if we consider that loci.
That, that would be less than, would permit an emergency, you know, for, but it's not necessary that you raise it to thirteen-six. I think that may, you know, because emergency vehicles will have plenty of access to all, you know, to most sides of this building, if not all, around the canopy.
So that's more of the example.
Yeah, yes.
Right, right. Uh, number eight was, uh, will there be rooftop equipment that will be visible from Bartel Road? I don't know if there'll be rooftop equipment, because I haven't run it, nothing yet. But those parapets on the side, they're at least four foot high of roof. And if we have a piece of pipe for the equipment, then we'll adjust, make sure, maybe we get a lower base of the equipment, raise the parapet so you can't see it. I think, I tell you that, we'll make every effort to make sure that it isn't invisible. Up until a couple of weeks ago, we didn't think we'd be able to use gas anymore.
Yeah, right.
Or even gas, so we definitely probably do, uh, gas firing. So those are a little different scale proportion of the electrons. And so, uh, we'll make sure that they don't, they're not gonna be seen.
And, and they'll be reflected on the plans.
Okay. Firm exterior wall, non-sloping, would be provided as shown in rendering at all entrances. We haven't gotten to what the sconce looks like. This is all AI-generated stuff, so. When we pick this sconce, we'll be happy to show, but yes, they will probably be in the locations where we've shown them. Won't be any others. So only lighting on the building will be the sconces. And it'll probably be sunlight in, in those canopies to light up the entry. That'll be it, and the sign, that'll be it for exterior light. And I don't know if it'll look like that in the end, but maybe they will. Um, okay, site comments. Here we're leading into a lot of questions. Um, the light taking scene scan. Someone indicated, and I, I'm not sure if I read it correctly, but the, the way it was written in the letter to us. Landscaping standards require at least one tree for each forty lineal feet of perimeter and at least one shrub for each ten lineal feet of perimeter lot. Based on six hundred lineal feet of street frontage, a minimum of fifteen trees and sixty shrubs are required. I didn't understand what they meant by street frontage, but we technically don't have side yards, side lots, or even the rear yard, rear, because it's a least parcel. If we're gonna look at this as being only a parcel by itself, then yes, we need to do something. But you see, each of our sides goes into the parking lot, uh, that's currently there. Only question, I mean, um, how, the math on this, do we really need sixteen trees just because of the size of our parcel? I don't know whether we'll push sixteen trees.
So my guess is technically yes, right? But
Well, this, this one gets
But again, we have discretion.
Well, this, I, I don't know where the six hundred feet, they hit the number, one eighty-five, one eighty-five.
They hit the minimum, one eighty-five, one eighty-five.
So you're, it was a six hundred this?
Yeah, but I think.
That it talks about the perimeter, the entire perimeter.
Yeah, so.
This is unique.
The guy, right, so you you can vary from that, I I guess the bigger question to me is uh is the intent to take, you know, these areas here that you currently show as strike and turning those into curved islands where you can put landscape?
Uh we can do that if he if he wants to.
I mean, to me, that that gives you the area to begin to try and meet the requirements, right? So i- i- it seems to me, you know, you you maximize those areas with the amount of landscape you can put in.
And the fifty-foot buffer.
And and it doesn't have to be one every forty feet or thirty feet, whatever we see to manage. Yeah, but and you group them too, I mean, they don't have to necessarily be, again, just a little little memory, you know, consistent distance. So you, you know, you've got quite a bit of area out here that potentially.
In front, we have a lot of there, that's not paid, we can take that off.
Well, if if, and I I guess, you know, what I'm looking at is, again, if these are eight, we made a bit wider, you know, a bit more substantial. Um you know, these will give you areas where you can put landscape, especially three feet.
The the one on on the bottom side of the of the uh plan there, that definitely can't all be done so that uh it's hopefully, I don't know if we get ten feet out of it because of where our lease line is, we definitely could get eight feet out of it. We have that latitude, because part of the the rules said some areas could be eight feet longer than eight one.
Yeah, I think it, I think you've got to work with them in constraints of the site to see where.
Yeah, other question I had was uh, see where we're showing the nine parking spaces, you might have some right there, yes? If you look at the parking lot in the plaza aisle, it's basically it's basically a building, uh trafficway, parking, parking, trafficway, parking, parking, trafficway. So that green line, that's forty-five feet up there, that green line is the start of our least parcel. So my next question is, can we take those nine cars? And if it becomes a problem dimensionally for us to get landscaping in there, can I just continue with uh accessway and parking so that the parking would be on be be standard, but I did a quick drawing, that's what's up there now. Can I open, just eliminate that, so you got parking, parking, access, parking, parking, access, parking? So I didn't have to deal with that?
You mean, I can't see it from here?
We use the.
Picking out the curb for that?
Yeah, picking out there, go, parking, parking, access, parking, parking, access, parking, then we would have access once you came inside the curve, so like, basically put it curves at the end with the real.
You're suggesting using the plaza parking, is that what you're saying?
Well, no, I'm saying the plaza parking could use this parking.
Should look up on the screen he's talking about? Getting rid of this curbing.
Right, because we're not gonna need all of those cars, but I don't know how often the plaza gets full. So I'm saying that if we if eliminated that, then that parking could be for paying us.
I'm not crazy about that idea. So any other thoughts about removing that curbing?
I had some issue about the way it is now, the uh cross-traffic in between the bank and that parking section. People come in and park and they have to walk across the traffic, two-way traffic to get to the bank. Something to address there?
Be right here, Chuck?
Yeah.
Is there anything? That's that's pretty common. That's pretty typical.
Let me, let me bring up a issue. We'll we'll blame all this, I guess. What I'm concerned about is 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 the available stacking that you have at the end of the drive-through here. And typically, if you want a minimum of three vehicles, provide for a minimum of three vehicles for each of these lanes, a- and that's a minimum four would probably be preferred. You know, I I think you get two vehicles here, you know, and if this is this, you get two vehicles, this is blocked up. Right, I if you get another vehicle here and vehicle here, this is blocking up, and if the next vehicle, well, one won't be able to get through and get to the to the ATM. Um and two is out here in this, you know, in this drive aisle and is blocking, you know, the parking here. So there's, I think there's a bigger issue here with the stacking distance that we have available behind the drive-through, which which means this kind of needs to shift a little bit over to the to the to the right here and and maybe this parking either gets moved over here, I mean, I I don't want to sit down on this screen space, but I think it may have happened to because you know, I I I think this is great, I think this will be excellent, and it can be a very, you know, make it much nicer looking than it is now. But I think you really kind of have to move this over here to get better stacking here and then taking this parking and potentially putting it along this area here and and leave that out. So I I think, you know, I understand the discussion we're having, but I I guess I want to point that out because I think there needs to be a uh uh some significant modification to this.
That's a great point, what if you mirror imaged it? Put the main entrance on the other side and pushed.
I think you end up saying this year.
So this would, this would be down here.
Well, like I said, I think you need to provide a minimum of three, three, and then have room to maneuver around. You know, I mean, you you could take care of part of the issue with by pulling this back. Well, even there, you have two vehicles, you know, you have two vehicles here, two vehicles here, two of the ATM. Pulling that back, we really have to pull that all the way to here, almost eliminate this so someone can get by and get out, you know, get around.
And you have the drive-through to the right one.
Um so I I, again, I I I think you need to look at this a little closer, and and again, I think there might be some significant modifications to the site layout relative to what we have now, because I I just don't think we have enough space here. And 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 there's other options, I mean, um I appreciate and would prefer you to keep the drive-through you know, here and not maybe over here, because that would be another way to do it, right? Put the drive-through over here, you've got stacking available on your site. Um but, you know, that now moves everything around, things are different, so I guess, I I don't know how much more conversation more we want to have on this specific layout, because I think it needs some. I I don't, I don't, if anybody's in agreement or if you agree, do you understand what I'm saying?
That's a good point, we we talked about stacking at the time. When you go to the site, that parking lot right there on the left or the restaurant is never used.
I understood, I mean, I it it's probably like the goof, I I I get that, but I don't think it's good practice to design it such that you are creating areas where vehicles are potentially going to be, you know, blocking the access aisles.
I I think we can do that, I don't think.
So, like I said, so I, I don't know how much further we want to discuss this particular layout, if there's what at least I see is it need to make some decent changes to this layout.
Yeah, very good point.
So you're mind of restacking, make our staff?
I think three, I think three minimum, I mean, I've I've looked at other codes and recommendations and you know, three seem to be the minimum, four preferable, some say five, I think that might be the deal or so.
Sorry, it's more like.
At lunchtime.
But um, oh yeah, I I guess I just suggest that, you know, maybe after the drawing board, you could come up with another concept, bring it back and forward, and then, you know, proceed at that point to a uh more detailed set of plans.
Well, that's one of the themes earlier.
Yeah, a- absolutely, no, it it's all good stuff, um I think, but it's that's that's really kind of stuff.
Okay. And the other issue, we all maybe you know, deal with the trees and the form of the again, that's when you we talked about, that's a remember the building now requires one tree or be twenty feet, so can I put off the twenty feet trees?
I again, th- those are guidelines, I I, you know, make it work within whatever you're thinking, what what you've got. Four will make it have size, but it feels that. I don't know that anyone did use a answer and say, this will be a tough, you know, I I think you do these four of the best.
We're gonna want some nice landscaping that's workable for the site, and I think it would include the front green area as well, right, Mark?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, and you know, I mean, they, you know.
Yeah, that that helped us a lot, and I think it helped a lot.
I mean, you know, they've got, you know, landscape areas, they've got quite a bit of area available, and I think this is a very, very nice plan, I think. Huge improvement to the big actual parking, you know, at there now, right?
Yeah.
Um so I I think this is a a good project, I just think there's a little bit of fine tuning here that that needs to be done to rest of them, and that's why we're here.
Teamwork.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, that's it, can you answer all the questions?
Any any additional questions?
I had a couple.
Fire away.
This one, one story, so there's just extra space at the top because it's all buildings. Okay? I like the idea of you putting some gingerbread in because you don't see that anymore. It's a nice treatment, even though I can't really see it in shadows there. I I think that'd be a good addition when we nail down the uh adjustments.
That's all, I mean, can you know, if you tell me.
Sure.
Because it was a time that I've never thought, you know, you can't put another building, whatever the reasons are.
Sure.
You need to stop and make the best way of the taking is that whatever we need to do, often, that's.
Well, certainly.
I like the brick, it's classic. Um one thing, are you done?
Sure.
I just wanted to say, uh make sure that you are clear on the traffic pattern coming in, especially for the ATM, because it looks like, well, right now, you you don't want people coming, because you have this back access right way in that you, you know, you can get in from the restaurant or in here, you just want one to keep the traffic going one way, you know, through there. Yeah, border it in so people can't like be zooming in from all side, we don't want that. Yes, yes. It will.
Somebody else, ATM, say what it is?
No, I.
Oh, oh, okay. I know, I couldn't see it on the drawing, is it?
Oh, no, you you the current ATM stays?
No, 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 this this one's gonna be.
It's mine, but there will be a ATM, there's a right through, ATM as well.
Say that again, the the current ATM is gonna be gone?
Yeah.
And then.
There's a standalone ATM.
Okay.
There's one right there.
Mark, can you go to page A four, please? On the elevation one?
And it's Bull, Bull and Bear, is it, or that's the name of the restaurant, or Bear, yeah.
I just want to point out, this will probably go away, you mentioned this is AI, but number ten talks about diagonal parking. Diagonal striping.
That occurs. But yeah, all that will go away.
Oh, it's very great.
We can do purge. It's not even parking spaces.
Oh.
After diamonds, we'll decide.
Okay. Hey. Everybody else up? Terrific.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you, have a good night.
Thank you.
See you again.
We're just seeing you again.
Yes.
Right.
That concludes the agenda items. Any discussion?
And I changed, okay, we'll just see you in a little bit.
All good, do you have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
We have a second, meeting is adjourned.